The meeting is called to order at 5:34 PM. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
We will now have some announcements from our Assistant City Clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the City Council during tonight's meeting on items on this agenda only, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive City Council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
First item, please.
Item number one, study session. Fiscal year 2024-25 budget study session for proposed city operating budget and capital improvement program. Finance Director Kohola Kula will make the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Assistant City Clerk. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council. Will Kohola Kula, Finance Director for the City of San Gabriel. Tonight is my pleasure to present for tonight's study session the proposed budget capital improvement program for fiscal year 2425. The topics for tonight's presentation will include a review of the budget process up to this point. We'll take a look at all and all funds budget summary. We'll do some detailed look at the general fund budget, including revenues, expenditures, general fund, fund balance, and then we'll do a five-year forecast of the general fund. We'll look at our internal service funds, special revenue funds. We'll take a look at citywide staffing, our capital improvement program for next year, and then the next steps in the budget process. So the budget process up to this point includes, on January 25th, we kicked off the budget and departmental directors were provided budget instructions and tasked with putting together their spending plans for the upcoming fiscal year. On February 6th, we presented to council the results of the community budget survey. So this survey helped us reveal the budget priorities of the community. The survey was conducted from January 3rd through January 17th, and some of the priorities were streets, public safety, city facilities, and attracting and retaining new businesses. On February 15th, departmental directors, departments submitted their detailed spending plans and budget requests for new initiatives and equipment to the finance department. The finance department compiled all of that information, presented the budget document to the city manager, and then on March 18th through the 29th, budget meetings were held with the city departments, the city manager and finance, where we took a meticulous review and discussed the present budget proposal, spending plans for the upcoming fiscal year with tentative approval or denial on some of the spending plans. And then finally, that leads us here tonight, April 24th, where we're conducting a public budget study session on the draft budget up to this point. So moving on to the all funds budget summary. So this slide presents the all funds budget by fund type and expenditure type. The general fund is the city's main operating fund and comprises the largest portion of the city's budget, making up 65%. We have our special, 21 special revenue funds to, which are used to account for revenues that are restricted for specific purposes. We have three internal service funds, used to account for services provided to other city departments, risk management, IT, and fleet maintenance. As far as expenditure type, the majority of our expenditures are for operating, 96%, with new funding for the capital improvement program of 4%. Moving on to the general fund. So for fiscal year 252425, proposed general fund revenues is 54.5 million. Proposed expenditures and transfers out is 53.7 million, which leaves us with a positive net change in fund balance of $773,000. Revenues and transfers in are projected to be up by 2.9 million, as well as expenditures and transfers out are also proposed to be up by 2.8 million. On the upcoming slides, we'll analyze in detail general fund revenues and expenditures. So moving on to general fund revenues, so just for the council's information, the projections for the revenues of the general fund are derived from, we look at historical trends, we get some information from third parties. We combine that with an assessment of the overall economic environment, and then we also add a little bit of conservatism to those overall projections. So this slide presents the composition of our general fund revenue. And as you can see from the pie chart, that taxes make up the largest portion of our general fund revenue, with the next largest revenue source being our transfers in from the city's retirement fund. The purpose of the transfer in from the retirement fund is to pay for our CalPERS pension costs. And so with these two revenue sources, it makes up 86% of our general fund sources. This slide here compares the proposed fiscal year 242425 proposed revenues and transfers in with the adopted 2324 amounts. So taxes has the largest increase of 1.5 million, followed by transfers in of, with an increase of 952,000, and then we have fees and charges for services that are projected to increase by $444,000 for the overall increase, a 2.9 million, an increase of 6% from prior year adopted. And then on the next few slides, we'll analyze in more detail the changes in general fund revenue. So this slide presents line item detail of our general fund taxes. The largest tax for the city is property tax, made up of our secured and unsecured, as well as our property tax in lieu of VLF. Property tax has, is steadying, has shown consistent growth. Our utility user tax is the next largest tax, projected to increase by $339,000 from the adopted budget. That increase is partially based on what we're seeing in 2324 as it projected is looking at exceeding the adopted budget with a total amount of 5.4 million. And then moving on down, we have Measure SG, which is higher by 132,000. Measure SG trends at about 105% of our sales tax, despite being at a lower tax level, Measure SG being 0.75% and our state sales tax being 1%. And this is due to the tax being applied on goods used in San Gabriel, for example, vehicles versus our state sales taxes applied based on where the item is sold. So if someone purchases it from Cerritos, purchases a vehicle from Cerritos, and they bring it to San Gabriel, we get the 0.75% Measure SG tax on that, where Cerritos will get the point-of-sale tax. So here is a line chart that provides a historical analysis of our six major tax revenues. So this is COVID to recovery to post-COVID, and the graph kind of reveals how our major tax revenues behave. So at the top, we have our two property taxes, property tax in lieu and property tax, and we can see how steady that those revenue sources have been. Moving the third one down from the left is our utility user tax, which was very flat during the COVID period, and then had a large increase coming out of COVID, and it seems to be getting back to normal growth. We have our two, in black, we have our two sales tax revenues, the state sales tax and Measure SG. We see the COVID, the implementation of Measure SG in fiscal year 20202021, the recovery, and then now we're kind of in more of a steady growth. And then at the bottom, we have the transient occupancy tax, where when the hotel was closed, we saw the big drop. We saw the recovery, and then now it's getting into more of a normal, steady growth environment that we're in now. Moving on to the other general fund sources, licenses and permits up by 112,000. Some of the highlights, building permits had a decrease of 245,000. That was offset by some of the other line items, one of them being plumbing permits, increase of 80,000, our use of money in property, pretty much the same. Our interest income went up by 75,000. Our rental income decreased by 76,000. There's been no change in the rental of city properties, that's all the same, but there was a new accounting pronouncement that was implemented that changed the way rental income is accounted for. So it's no longer a revenue source like we used to account for it, but no changes in rental of city property. Fines and forfeitures, increase of 120,000. Vehicle code fines up by 15, parking fines up by 100,000. Fees and charges, increase of 444,000, with ambulance fees and planning fees driving that increase. And then other revenue, really our only significant decrease in revenue of 148,000, and that's due to it being the off-year when we exchange our Prop A funds. But we did have an increase in our workers' comp reimbursements of 200,000. And then, as mentioned earlier, transfers in are up by 952,000. This is the transfer from the retirement fund to the general fund to pay for CalPERS pension costs. And the reason there's more transfer in is our pension costs went up as our liability increased this year due to the investment loss that occurred in 2122. So that's our general fund revenues, and I will move on to our general fund expenditures. So overall, general fund expenditures are higher by 2.8 million. And then, as you can see in the pie chart, by far, the largest expenditure category is our personnel expenditure, which makes up 78% of general fund expenditures, followed by operational expenditures, 4%, and that consists of, not followed by, but operational expenditures make up 4% and consists of expenditures that are used by the department, supplies, training, things like that. Then we have our contractual at 7%. These are the services that are contracted out. We have our internal service fund allocations at 8%. These are allocations for services provided by the internal service funds, risk management, IT, and fleet maintenance. And then we have a transfer out of, which makes up 2%, and these are one-time expenditures, as well as the $350,000 transfer, operating transfer to the Mission Playhouse. And then on the next few slides, we'll analyze in more detail what is driving the changes in each of these categories. So our largest category is personnel, and this slide breaks down personnel expenditures for the general fund. So overall increase in personnel is 2.9 million. So full-time salaries had an increase of $978,000. Retiree health, increase of 291, as there are more retirees and health insurance costs go up. Health insurance up by 280,000. Limited service, part-time employees up by 127,000. And then our CalPERS unfunded accrued liability payment up by 793,000. CalPERS normal cost up by 158, and then our sworn overtime up by 338. And then the general fund personnel changes highlights kind of explains what's driving these increases. So for the general fund, there were nearly five new positions added to the general fund for this next fiscal year. And there was the 2% safety employee increase per the current agreement. And then in 2324, there was, the miscellaneous agreement went into place that was after the budget was adopted. So when we compare the 2425 adopted to the 2324, that is also driving an increase. And just as a note, in this 2425 budget, there's nothing included for a miscellaneous employment, employee agreement. And then the fire OT increased, but now it's more consistent with prior year actuals. We expanded limited service employees, specifically in community services and community development, to enhance certain programs. And then, as we did last year, we've budgeted $250,000 to make a contribution to our OPEB trusts. So some more analysis on our general fund line items. So transfers out, total budget of 1.3 million. So Mission Playhouse is the ongoing transfer to the Mission Playhouse of 350,000. The remaining items are augmentations for fiscal year 2425, they're all one-time. We have our ERP system in the finance department that we will need to replace. We're in the process of replacing it, so we're looking to enter into contract next fiscal year. That will pay for a portion of it. So that's 250,000 is included in the budget for the ERP system. Conducted energy weapons tasers for the police department, 200,000. Fire hoses, 100,000. Facilities access control systems, 60,000. Updating our development impact fee, 60,000. Replacing our police audio recording system, 50,000. And gas mask, handguns, rifles, AEDs in the police department of 71,000. And recreation registration software for community services of 30,000. So that's our transfers out. And then our contractual, new for this adopted budget, we have mental health services that the council approved in this current fiscal year. So, but this is new for the adopted budget. So we have 53,000 in the budget for the mental health services contract. It'll be an election year here in November, so there's 95,000 for county election services. And then some of our significant contractual services that are ongoing, animal control, $525,000, which is an increase of 28% from the prior year agreement. Parking enforcement, 350. We have a retainer for legal services, 241. Fire dispatch, 241. Crossing guard services, 200K. And then we have our prosecution services, which is our city prosecution, as well as code enforcement, 175. And then we have our other legal services, labor, $145,000. And then the last few line items are operational expenditures, increase of 137, driven by special departmental supplies, staff development, and special events. We have our allocations, expenditure to the internal service funds, a decrease of $156,000. We saw a decrease in our liability insurance of 134, and a decrease in the allocation from the information technology of 72, as the majority of the major projects have already been funded in information technology, and vehicle maintenance is up by nearly 15. Utilities decreased by a little bit of $4,000. And then here is another perspective of our general fund expenditures. So this is general fund expenditures by department versus we were looking at general fund expenditures by type. And like all cities, public safety makes up the majority of the budgeted expenditures, followed by public works. So moving on to the general fund five-year forecast, we'll have a focus on our net change in fund balance and our fund balance reserves. So this slide presents a bar chart that displays our, the five-year forecast of our net change in fund balance for the general fund. So this is whether the general fund fund balance is increasing or decreasing, and it goes from the proposed budget all the way through 2930. And then you can see with the positive increases in the bars that are, we have a positive net change in fund balance, so our fund balance is increasing by those amounts each year. Revenues minus expenditures equals the net change in fund balance. And then on the line chart, we have our overall fund balance reserve percentage. So we're taking our total fund balance and dividing it by expenditures. And so we see our fund balance reserve percentage forecasted at 32.7% for the next proposed budget, and then increasing nearly to 40% in fiscal year 2930. So here's the data that derives the line and bar charts. The main line is the blue row, the net change in fund balance, and that's just the difference between revenues and expenditures. And you can see how it's positive. We get the spikes every other year due to the Prop A exchange. And then on this slide, now we... So we're looking at our five-year forecast as it applies to our fund balance reserve policy. So our ideal reserve, our ideal assigned contingency reserve target is 25%. And so based on our policy, once we reach that 25% level, then we're going to start funding and we're going to start committing fund balance to OPEB, our other post-employment benefit liability, as well as committing funds to replacing capital. So as we apply our policy, we'll meet the 25% for the assigned reserves, and then we'll add $500,000 to the OPEB funding, and any remaining amount will place for capital replacement. And so this just kind of projects what our balances will look like moving forward. And we're able to maintain the 25%, add 500,000 to the OPEB funding, and then still add more to the capital replacement. And then here's a bar chart of what the balances will look like projected moving forward. The gray bar being our 25% assigned for contingency reserves, and the orange bar committed for capital replacement, and the blue committed to OPEB funding. So then just, you know, one note, and as we discussed the budget last year, we talked about needing to set aside funds for OPEB funding and capital replacement. And with the implementation of this reserve policy, we're addressing that. We're committing funds for OPEB funding and capital replacement while meeting our reserve goal. So moving on to our internal service funds and special revenue funds. The city has three internal service funds, internal service funds, fleet services, risk management, and information technology. Overall, the expenditures for fleet services funds are down by 583,000. Some of the highlights of expenditures in each of the funds. So in fleet services, there's $400,000 set aside for vehicle replacement. So we're putting money away to replace our vehicles on an annual basis. We'll be purchasing one fire vehicle, or proposing to purchase one fire vehicle for the 80,000. We replaced the gasoline storage tank at 25,000. And in the police department, we placed six vehicles at 295,000. Risk management, our workers' comp went up by 86,000, and general liability went down by 73,000. So we were pleasantly surprised that kind of the net on our liability was pretty flat. We were looking at it, we were anticipating somewhere between 5 and 7%, and it came back pretty flat. And information technology, there is no funding for major IT projects as the majority of them have already been funded. And then moving on to special revenue funds. So the city has a total of 21 special revenue funds that, as mentioned earlier, are restricted for specific purposes, such as transportation, public safety, community services, service capacity enhancements, retirement costs, and air pollution reduction. So this table displays the functions that our special, that our 21 special revenue funds are funding. And then a little more detailed analysis of two of our special revenue funds. So our retirement fund, as mentioned earlier, is restricted for the, to pay for CalPERS pension costs. And then so based on the beginning balance of 901,000, projected tax revenue of 10.1 million, and then the transfer to the general fund of 10.8 million, we're projecting a ending fund balance of 186,000 on an annual basis. We do a forecast of our retirement fund and projected expenditures to determine if the funding looks sufficient. And we've forecasted out the 30 years of the UAL payment, and overall, the funding is sufficient. And then in the Mission Playhouse, so after transferring $350,000 from the general fund to the Mission Playhouse, with the projected ending fund balance of this fiscal year of 272,000, so the Mission Playhouse is projected a negative fund balance at June 30, 2025 of $184,000. So staff is currently assessing opportunities to increase revenue. In the meantime, we'll continue to monitor the Mission Playhouse operations and report to council regularly on the financial status of the Mission Playhouse. So some of the highlights of our special revenue funds. So in our solid waste fund, a new item, a new augmentation for 2425 is a citywide bulky item cleanup service from our waste hauler. Our Prop A fund pays for our RIT SG at 578,000. New for 2425 is using development impact fees to do a new restroom at Lugo Park. Gas tax pays for street sweeping, the electricity for streetlights, and tree maintenance. And out of our AQMD, new for 2425 is one hybrid admin vehicle for the police department of $70,000. So moving on to citywide staffing. So for 2425, citywide staffing, there's a total of new, of six new positions are proposed. And... And these positions are added for the specific purposes to enhance services to the public or improve operational effectiveness. The positions include maintenance worker in community services, GIS specialist that shared between public works, community development, and fire, a facility supervisor in public works, and accounting tech in finance, management analyst in fire, and evidence tech in police, which was approved during 2324. Three of these positions are being offset with the elimination of a limited service employee position. And then, as well as in our staffing changes, there's proposed for the reclassification of six positions, three positions to assistant director, one position to management analyst, one position to management assistant, one position to recreation coordinator, and then one equity adjustment in IT. Moving on to the city's capital improvement program. So new funding for the CIP program for fiscal year 2425 is just over $3 million. And this bar chart illustrates the allocations of the new funding for the CIP program for 2425, with the largest, the largest amount of new funding going to intersection improvements. And then from there, we have park improvements at $950,000. And then here is just the detail of what, of our capital improvement program summary for fiscal year 2425. So moving on to the next steps in the budget process. So these steps include, after tonight's budget session, over the next week, beginning next week, we'll meet individually with each city council member, along with the city manager and the finance budget team, to continue to review and discuss the proposed budget for fiscal year 2425. On June 4th at 11:00 AM, we'll have an informal community budget meeting at the San Gabriel County Library, where we'll present financial and budget information and allow the public an opportunity to talk with staff about the city's finances. And then on June 4th, we'll bring back the budget to council and conduct a public hearing to further discuss the proposed fiscal year 2425 budget, operating budget, CIP budget, and the appropriations limit. At that meeting, the city council will have an opportunity to approve the budget for fiscal year 2425. If additional analysis is needed, we can bring back the budget again on June 18th, 2024, to consider the budget for adoption. And then finally, on July 1st, 2024, the new fiscal year where we'll begin. So staff's recommendation, staff recommends that the city council review and discuss the fiscal year 2425 proposed operating budget. and discuss the fiscal year '24-'25 proposed operating budget and capital improvement program, and provide direction to staff as appropriate. That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of overall comments. Will, thank you so very much for the presentation. The detail is great. Just a couple of comments for council on the framework that we used when we were putting the budget together. I'm proud to say that the revenues that you see don't include any of the projects that are out there under construction. So for example, where the Curio, we are fairly certain it will open at some time in the next year. We have not increased the TOT to project that. One of the ways the city got into trouble six or seven years ago was, I think, in a lot of ways logically, projecting those revenues, but none of those are in, in our current expenditures. In full disclosure, in our five-year budget forecast, there is a little bit of TOT in years two, three, four, and five. But in the fiscal year budget that you're looking at now, it's all of our conservative revenues that I know are achievable this year. The second thing is, is I'd like to look at the budget as continuing to backfill that work that we were doing for several years when we were in our financial hole. So it still is a combination of fixing our physical city, not only the city's facilities, but including, you know, more, more investment this year into things like sidewalks and potholes and those kinds of things, but also in our staffing. We've added programs over the years, as you're all aware of, but we've been so conservative and haven't had the funds to add the staffing to really adequately do those programs well, but also do the work that we have been doing. I'm very conservative and haven't wanted to increase the staffing by a lot, because as you all know, once we add staff, it stays there forever. And when times of bad economics happen, then we either have to keep positions open or lay staff off. So I'd like to make sure that when we add staff, we are fairly certain we can continue with those programs going forward. And so I'm proud of Will and the team for looking at the five-year forecast for all of those expenditures that we're proposing. There is more than a million and a half dollars in the General Fund of one-time expenditures. So if we have an economic downturn, those could be the things that would, we could be taking away pretty easily and not have to affect services to the community. And then after that, we'd have to start looking at some of those deeper cuts. And then finally, as you're all aware, you know, it's very difficult to attract employees to all industries, but we've been having a same difficulty as other cities with PD and Fire specifically, and again, all of our departments as well. But specifically, public safety have been difficult to attract. And so rather than waiting on trying to attract those employees, we're adding non-sworn employees to try to augment the duties that the sworn folks are doing, to try to add more time for them to be on the street or solving crime or fighting fires or those kinds of things. So the examples of that are the evidence tech position in PD, as well as the dispatchers that we've added over the past few years, because it allows officers to be either solving crimes or out on the streets versus having to be dispatchers. And the same with Fire. We have a lot of administration duties in our Fire Department that have been done by sworn personnel, our division chiefs and our chief. And so you'll see, one of the proposals is for a management analyst in the Fire Department. So while that may not seem like adding to our public safety complement, it really does, because it adds time for those sworn folks to be doing what they're best at and what they're paid to do. So with that, oh, and the final thing is, is you saw one of the slides that Will put up. We're doing some reclassifications in three departments and adding Assistant Director positions. Working with the department heads to focus on succession planning. I want to make sure that we have opportunities that when our folks, our best folks are desiring to move up, that we have spots for them. And then as folks leave, that we have good folks that are trained and ready to backfill. Those are not brand-new positions. Those will be folks that are already doing division-level work that will be reclassified into Assistant Director, given those extra duties and that extra experience, but not adding a full new position. So it'll be almost like a specialty pay for those folks to do that extra work. And then when any of our directors, hopefully not anytime soon, but when any of our directors leave, we'll have that talent that's ready to go and step up, and hopefully we won't miss a step in that process. So with that, I and Will and Finance and all the department heads are ready to answer any questions that council has. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mark. And well, thank you so much for pointing out some of the key issues that we may have a concern. And this is always very good to have, you know, not over-optimistic on numbers and doing more conservatively, not over-counting something that revenue in the future. But also, thank you so much, Will, and well done on your presentation. Now, does any council member have any factual questions for staff to clarify the report? No, actually, the questions, just action, not factual. So Vice Mayor, would I just start?
I'll start. Well, Will, again, excellent presentation, very comprehensive, easy to follow. Every year, it gets better and better, so thank you for that. I'm just kind of going to try to go in order of the agenda item. So on SR5 on top, you've already kind of talked about it, but it says the variance in Measure SG points of use application versus the state sales tax point of sale application. Could you give another example besides the car? Because that just gets a little confusing. Yeah, that's awful.
Yeah, so, so the Measure SG tax is applied based on where an item is used. So if you go to, if you're doing a major renovation in your house and you're making a large purchase, let's say from floor to core, which is not in San Gabriel, and if you have that delivered to San Gabriel, then San Gabriel will receive the Measure SG tax on that purchase.
So how is it picked, how is that picked up during? Because when you make the purchase, they don't care where we're from. How do you track that to make sure we get our percentage?
It's all registered with the state, and so their point-of-sale system will know that it's 91776. And based on, based on the zip code, will, the tax will come to San Gabriel.
So if it's delivered, I can understand that. But if they just pick it up, it's based on, and they pay cash, let's say, they still are able to track it?
That's a good question. Like if they come in and you purchase just something, and I would say, I would say no, probably on that one.
Okay, so if it's cash, it's not, we're not getting a percentage. If it's a credit card, it makes it a little easier. Okay.
If you're having it delivered to San Gabriel.
Or delivered. Okay. And then, yeah, the state taxes is what I'm used to, or we're all used to, so it's pretty clear. Okay. Well, Measure SG just continues to grow, so that's the good news. So thank you for that. My next question is down below on SR5. It talks about building, well, there's a line item, building permits, and it's going down. And so I know right now, we're probably at the highest level when it comes to construction. So that's why the building permits, well, they were high, but now they're starting to go down, because there's less and less, well, there will be less and less construction. However, we'll also have less costs, because I know the permitting is based on, to try to offset some of the cost. And so I'm just trying to see how you follow that. You know, when you do your projections, you're looking at the number of projects, you're looking at the decline in projects. Can you just give me a little insight on how you're looking at that? Because that number is going to be soon, at one, at one point, closer to maybe 10,000. Because we're not going to have as much construction. We have, what, 19 projects, something like that going on?
Yeah, so those departmental-specific revenues, you know, Community Development would kind of be the most knowledgeable on how that revenue is going to trend.
I think he's ready.
So we would pass it to Aldo to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. The best indicator are the applications that we receive that go to planning. That's a good indicator of, of the entitlements that we'd be looking at, which also relate to the type of projects that we'd be looking at as well. Over the last couple of years, we've noticed that the trend is plateauing when it comes to the large development projects. But certainly looking at, for example, ADUs or accessory dwelling units, those are steadily, steadily increasing somewhat. The renovation projects for single-family homes, as well as replacement of single-family homes, are also part of the revenue stream. But as I mentioned, the good indicator is the, the planning applications for the various projects. And so we're seeing that those applications are, are more geared or lining up to be residential in nature, rather than the mixed-use-type development projects. So we're seeing a lot of that, the trend sort of plateauing or even decreasing, as well as looking at condominium-type projects. Eight-to-10-unit condominium projects are also consistent or plateauing as well. And so given that we're seeing the application process subsiding or decreasing, that gives us the ability to project that our building permits will also kind of fall in line in that trend.
Yeah, because for residential, it's going to be significantly less than the mixed-use.
Right.
So, okay.
Right.
But also, our costs are going to go down. So then that impact should be...
It will also impact the planning fees, because the planning fees are associated with the conditional use permits or the variances. And so it has a sort of a, an effect towards everything that we do in our, in our department.
Thank you for that. Then on page SR6, specifically parking fines, city. And it goes from $700,000 to $800,000. And, you know, those are our residents, and I'm just trying to understand, how can you predict it's going to go up 100,000? What is the primary driver there to, to increase?
So for parking fines, we're looking at historical trends. So $700,000 was the budget for the prior fiscal year adopted. As we're experiencing through this year, it looks like that we're going to exceed that $700,000 this year. So the projected for this year, I don't know the exact amount, but it's higher than $700,000. So based on that, looking at a possible increase in the amount. So it would just be an incremental increase from the projected amount versus the adopted. So it won't be as large of increase, because it's, if you look at the projected amount.
Okay, yeah, you're right. You're looking at, I mean, comparing it to adopted, and you're looking at actual. So I can understand, I'm just, just in my mind, that's a lot of money just for parking fines. And hopefully, we can have some kind of educational program or something, because that's a lot of money for a little city, and it's our residents. Or, I mean, it could be also people from other cities, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you get a parking fine. I mean, I know the overnight, there's parking fines there, but it just concerns me. So hopefully, we do, we have a program to hopefully alleviate. That's the number I don't want it to go up. So something's happening. There's a disconnect, so hopefully, we can support our residents. I don't know if it's means, you know, more information, different languages, or better signage. There should, that number should be going down, not up. So that was a concern, a concern of mine. And then we have, let's see, Community Development. It's same page in the middle, and it goes, the change is 185,000, which is a 50% increase. And so I'm trying to understand, and I guess that's Aldo again, wait, yeah, Community Development. Is that because of consultants, because of, we do have an incline, but we know that that's going to level off? So does that include consultants in there? Is that why there's such a significant increase?
An increase of 185. And then it's...
It's in the middle.
This is your line item, it's right here, so it's...
Okay, yeah, I see that. Yeah, so that could be associated with a number of things. That can be our... Yeah, that doesn't, so, thank you, Linda. There's no consultation fees, there are no consulting fees as part of that. That is plan reviews for our planners to review projects, and there are fees associated with that. There's also fees associated with, as I mentioned, the entitlement fees. So if you apply for a conditional use permit or a variance application that go before planning commission, those include processing fees. And that, that is what impacts that $185,000 bump.
Okay, so that bump is still relating to all the, probably mostly mixed use. I mean, that's where the most of it takes place. The residential's so much smaller scaled.
Could be mixed-use projects, could be commercial projects that require conditional use permits. Even design review applications also have a fee associated with those, those applications.
Let me just ask, I know we're looking at revenues, but consultants, you know, we've had, we've said that, you know, let's be more efficient, you know, there's no reason to hire someone if we know it's kind of a temporary situation. When it comes to consultants, I'm hoping that consultants use, and it could, not just your department, but all departments. That number would go into your department, correct? It's not outside of some other account?
Yeah, we have a number of consultants that we use. We have two consultants that help us with building services. We have RKA and VCA Code Group that help us with either plan check reviews or building inspection process. We also have a consultant that helps us review architectural plans before they reach the planning commission or design review. We're also working with a consultant for the historic survey. And so for those, those specialty items that internally we don't have the professional certifications for, we definitely go out and look for consultation or consulting work.
And that will be under Community Development expenses and some line item, whatever the line item is?
For the items that directly impact our services, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then SR9, Mission Playhouse, of course, I have to mention that. So I'm trying to understand, you know, we talk about a transfer of 350. Then we have a deficit even after the transfer of 184. So really, it's a total of almost a half a million dollars of loss. That's what we're looking at there. Is that correct?
That's correct. If we didn't have the transfer of 350, it would be almost a half a million dollars.
So why don't we just transfer the five, the half a million to show what the true loss is? So at the end, it should be zero, because it doesn't make sense to have a deficit. You can't have a deficit. You, I mean, we all, we as, as the city, we use our General Funds to cover the Mission Playhouse. And so I just feel like it's a little, it doesn't show the true picture. It should say transfer of 534, and then we should always be at a net zero. Is there a reason we don't do that?
I think the reason is 350 is kind of the amount that we've established to transfer from the General Fund. So we've just kind of stuck with that amount. And for this year, we just allowed the deficit to be there. And kind of the thought is, well, if we're limited at 350, then staff will need to kind of figure it out. But that is an option. It will reduce the amount of our, of our $773,000 net change in fund balance, because we would need to transfer about 184,000 more to the Mission Playhouse fund.
I'm just asking that you reconsider showing that the way it is currently, because it just doesn't, it, it's not as honest, I guess, of what we're dealing with here with regards to the deficit for, for the Mission Playhouse. So I think that's important. Please reconsider the presentation. And then along the Mission Playhouse, and I think this is more Rebecca, what is the status of the foundation? Because now we have half a million, and, you know, that foundation is the opportunity to increase revenues. And I know there's been some talk about, well, we've been talking about it for a while. Can you give us a current status of the foundation, where we're at, and how fast we can move on it to try to help with our revenues?
Rebecca, I'm sorry, before you start, I want to be clear, because I don't want to obfuscate this. I want to be fully transparent. The numbers that Councilwoman, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Menchaca and Will are talking about are correct. But if you look at the delta between the revenue that the Playhouse brings in and the expenditures that the Playhouse sends out, it's about an $800,000 deficit. The only reason it's not bigger than that is because it's drawing from that fund balance. And the reason for that is, is as of COVID times, we were able to reduce the staffing to very, very low levels, and we received some unexpected revenue streams from things like those dance competitions. So that's how, in those first couple of COVID years, we were able to have just a $250,000 transfer one year, and then $350,000 after that. So as we ramped up staffing and programming, those revenues haven't increased as quickly. So I don't want anybody to walk away thinking the Playhouse is only 500,000, because right now, it is fully at 800,000. now, it is fully at $800,000.
And we want the Playhouse to be active. You know, we want it to, but we also want it to be sustainable because that's all coming from general fund. And we've already had this discussion, well, councils, since I can remember talking to some of the former council members, you know, this is a discussion that we've had over and over again about the Mission Playhouse. So the Mission Playhouse, people want it to stay. So that's not the issue. It's just how can we make it more sustainable? And right now, the only thing I can think of is the foundation. So can you give us a status on the foundation?
So, thank you. So in the next couple of meetings, staff will be bringing forward, our proposed plan is to actually do kind of a visioning workshop with both stakeholders and community to see really what the community wants for the Playhouse. And that would be, our intent would be to establish a foundation or a nonprofit or friends of the Mission Playhouse, but also to see what, to confirm what we're raising that money for. So we go in with a strong backing of what, of what we're looking to do. So that item of the proposed kind of visioning, I'm going to say workshop, but visioning exercise would be, we'll be coming forward with a consultant. We already have quotes on that. We'll be doing that in the next couple of meetings, and then the intent would likely be to establish a nonprofit then beyond that.
Thank you. Okay. Then SR16, I know that, well, I guess it's Rebecca again. So regarding park improvements, it talks about $950,000. And, you know, in the slides and in the detail, it shows that partial, I think $600,000 or maybe less than that was going to be to repair the bathrooms at Vincent Lugo. But the other part was for Smith Park. Is that for the bathroom stalls? Because I think it said pool, but I'm not, I wasn't quite sure. I think it was like $300,000, $400,000?
So the enhancements at Smith Park are, there's some that will be for the pool facility, the pool itself, and then there are some that will, will likely be for the pool facility. We're looking at kind of phasing it in a little bit. We have a variety of different funding sources that we can put toward that, but as you know, that facility is sore in need of a lot of work. So we've had, Community Services and Public Works have had several meetings as to how we can phase that in. And it's also a matter of figuring out a time of year that that's ideal to do because the pool is busy year-round. So we're looking at hopefully being able to start at least a portion of that after the summer months, after our swim lessons. But it would need to be before the beginning of next year because that's when the swim teams come in as well.
So it is going to be partially the bathroom stalls or the changing rooms or, I'm not sure what the...
Yeah.
...area is called, but...
Partially. We will, we will likely not rehab them completely, but we will do some, some work to them. But a lot of, a lot of the work is actually to the pool itself that needs to happen as well.
Okay.
So we definitely know there's a huge need.
Yes, I know. And I applaud you. I know you've tried at least twice, maybe three times for that grant, and it just hasn't come to fruition.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll keep working on it.
Yeah, just keep on trying. That's all we can do. Okay. And then, let's see, this is just page 61. It's finance and Will, I guess I'm not cool enough, but what is that picture? It's down below, you got, I understand the office, but there's this blue thing. It looks like, I'm not sure what that is.
We have David Swin, our executive manager.
Oh, is that David? Okay. Could you explain it? Because it's, I can't figure it out. The server rack.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. That picture is actually the back end of our server system.
It's the servers and the wires.
Is there a better picture maybe? It's just very confusing. I, I try to figure it out. I really did, and I thought, wow.
It was a chain-linked fence.
I did too. You're right. I thought it was a chain-linked fence. I'm like, what does that have to do with finance?
Metal things?
Anyway, just, I mean, obviously, it doesn't affect the numbers, but just made me reconsider. I did like the picture of Mark. Mark, that was the best picture I've seen. Then I see this, and I'm like, what is this? Okay, thank you for that. You like that one better. Okay. And then, let's see, I wanted to ask our police, Chief, would you mind coming up? This is my last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Chief.
Hello.
So I know for fire, it was, I don't know the exact page, but they did talk about a management assistant and who would now be assigned grant-writing duties. And so my question to you is, Mark kind of alluded to it, but I didn't quite hear the grant part. Do our police have someone similar like to fire that that's their, that's their focus? Because, you know, every, in a perfect world, every department should have a grant writer. And I know we're going to have one maybe on a general basis, Mark. Is that correct? Just more generally? But, you know, I was happy to see the fire have something specifically for their department. Do we plan to have someone like that? Or do we have someone already? Maybe it's Ricky already? I don't know.
We do have someone like that.
Okay.
And that's Mr. Brian Wood. That's back there.
Oh, there he is.
Former executive assistant to the chief, and I had promoted him. And with our onboarding of our new, my new executive assistant starting this week, that will be, one of Brian's primary duties is grants for the police department.
Okay, so that's comparable to what the fire is doing?
Correct.
Okay. And then, is there, what else can we do with regards to recruitment? Because we kind of, fire went through this, through this phase, and it seems like they're fully staffed or at least close to fully staffed. But our police, just like everyone else, and I understand that, and Mayor Bass, that was part of her address the other day, that it is plaguing every single city throughout the country. What are we doing to really set ourselves apart so we, you know, I know we're being thrown into the same pool of, you know, competing with the same candidates, but is there something more we can do that as council, we can be more supportive? I know Edward is doing an amazing job in trying to streamline, make it faster, turn it around. I know that you have these conditional offers that are out there, but are there, is there anything else we can do to keep pushing forward so we can be fully staffed?
I believe one, one thing that we have in place, and that's Captain Nakamura that works at the academies. And what we're finding is that with him working at the academies outside his normal duties, that gives us an in very quickly as to applicants that are in the academy that have not been picked up by a police department. So we're very quick to move on that. I think we're finding more success bringing people from the academy. We have one recruit right now that we went to patch a few months ago, and she's expected to graduate in early July and come out. The other is with laterals. What I'm looking at, and I talked to staff about, is I want to take a look at laterals just because either they were, didn't make it through their training phase, as long as there's no issues with regards to behavior, moral perpetuity, anything like that. I've talked to our field training officers in saying, I want to take a chance on them. If they had deficiencies at one department, doesn't mean that we cannot try and fix them. And our last few laterals, our last two laterals, had some training deficiencies. Both are progressing well with our FTO. So also looking at that and not just going with the norm of, well, they didn't make it off training, so they shouldn't be touched. I want to look at why and what those deficiencies were, have our staff study that, make an assessment, and again, using that to bring more applicants in as well.
So with regards to the entry level, or the ones that just graduate from the academy, there is a, was it 18 months where they have to have a, an officer shadow them, or they have to shadow, I guess, the officer? They can't be on their own. So that pulls from our more experienced, seasoned officers. Is that true? Is it 18 months or...
No, it's, it's not 18 months. The probation period, the employment probation period is 18 months. So once a applicant comes on graduating from the academy, it's approximately six months that they're with the field training officers, and they move from stage to stage, one through five. And once they complete that, then they are on their own, considered a solo officer, able to work just like any other police officer out in the field. Our most current trainee that successfully just came off training approximately a week ago was Norrie Smith. And also, we look at a six-month window in general, but if an applicant or recruit is showing, you know, that they're, they're moving along, we will, we will move them along faster in each phase to try to get them off training so long as they're meeting all the requirements for the training phase. When we bring on laterals, the two that we brought on, we're looking at having them complete their training much quicker in the sense that both had completed or got to the last stage with their former agencies before they were let go. So, and we're looking and seeing success with those two right now as well.
Right. And so what about filling in the gaps, for example, not in law enforcement, but with, let's say, economic development, you know? They fill in the gaps by hiring consultants. And that helps, again, get things done. So, because that's been one of our concerns, that things get stuck because we don't have, we're a small city. We can't, we have a huge, you know, burst of applications, building permits, or, you know, we just don't have the staffing. So community development, hire their consultants, as Aldo mentioned. Is there something similar for law enforcement, whether it's retired officers who might want to come back for short stints, or, you know, just officers that don't want to commit necessarily to a city? But that would help kind of relieve the pressure and the overtime because overtime is costly, obviously, but also just morale for reasons. Is there something like that in law enforcement where we can fill the gap?
Yes, there is. It's under, they consider it a 960 program where if we have a retired employee, we can bring them back. And the last employee that we were able to do that with for approximately two and a half months was Dane Woolwine. So he gave his retirement like on a Thursday. He started his 960 program on a Monday until he was picked up by, you know, another line of work that he wanted to do after retirement. So we have used it, but again, it's up to the individual retiree if they want to come back. Part of the challenge, not only with our agency, but other agencies, that when they retire, the last place they want to come back on Monday is to work. But we're, we're looking at that, and we're, and we're offering that when we can to offset some of the clerical work, the general clerical work within the police department. I had conversations with the city manager, and what we're doing is onboarding some part-time employees to help with our traffic division, with our detective division, and our recruitment and training bureau, excuse me, to bring on part-time employees to do that staff work that's tying them up with desk duties, if you will, in general, where they could be out in the field, as, as the city manager said. So we're in the process of doing that right now. We had one applicant, she's a student at USC, and we're in the process of onboarding her, and she will be assigned to our detective division to help with some of the filings and the district attorney paperwork.
That's great to hear. I'm, I guess I would also like to see, when you do your presentation, the amount of overtime that's being experienced right now. Because I think that's a real indicator. If you have a lot of overtime, then we need to, to address it somehow because you don't want the burnout. And I think my, my colleagues, and we've all, we're very supportive of law enforcement. Public safety is still the number one issue, I believe, in our city. There's, you know, there's a concern, just, not necessarily about our law enforcement, but the crime that is taking place. And so, you know, you cannot address the crime if you're not fully staffed, if you have people working the overtime. So I'm hoping that you're comfortable enough to address that with, with council, with the city manager, and if you need resources, we just need to know. But I'm glad to hear that you're looking at the clerical, you're looking at all ways to reduce that overtime. But hopefully, you can give us that report. Just, that's how I measure it. If there's not, if there's a lot of overtime, then there's a lot of gaps there. I mean, we are not, we shouldn't be incurring that much overtime because there's so much that comes with that, you know? Morale, just sheer tiredness, you know, fatigue, and it's not healthy for anybody. So please, let us know, let the city manager know how we can continue to support our police.
I appreciate everyone's support with, for the San Gabriel Police Department and the officers and the employees. And that's one of the topics that we started discussing just early this week, and we'll be discussing with the command staff as to overtime, but the bigger picture, our staffing and having officers out in the field. Also, keeping in mind, as you mentioned, the burnout, the mental wellness. We have officers that are willing to work overtime in field shifts, which is great, but at the same time, I still have a concern for their mental health and wellness and rest, and that they're rested enough to make the proper decisions while they're out working.
Exactly. Yeah. And, you know, when we have, we do a budget, but there's also always amendments. So if there's something that is not surfaced today, I hope you always feel comfortable to go with the city manager, who would then come to us to make the amendments, and if you need additional resources. And sometimes it's just, you can just get through, you know, three months, six months. It just makes a world of difference for everybody in the department. And, and so I'm hoping that you're comfortable coming forward and just really having that honest conversation with us and with our city manager. So, thank you, Chief, for all the wonderful work too.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And who will be the next? Yes, Councilmember Chan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, please. These are, summaries and reports are great, so thank you. Very easy to follow and appreciate the hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Chan.
Okay, let's see. Let's start with page SR5. Oh, just drew, just an easy question. At the bottom left-hand corner in that table graphic, graphic, there's, there's that one item at the bottom called CASP program. Can you please remind me what that is?
Yes, that is collected on new businesses or on businesses for a, it's a disability program, it's a state disability program. And that money is restricted for like disability-type programs as far as wheelchair ramps and the like.
For what was?
Like wheelchair ramps.
Wheelchair ramp, ramps. Okay, thank you. Let's see, next thing I have is, next page, SR6. At the top of the page, under the fines and forfeitures, there's the table. The last item on the table, administrative citation. What is that? I assume it's some kind of ticket or something for misbehaving.
I can give an answer to that, Councilmember Chan, and if Lynda wants to clarify that. Council will remember when we talked about that problem property in closed session.
Okay.
That we were using the city attorney's office to do some work to try to get them into compliance. Before we ever get to that point, we have an ability to issue administrative fines. It's different than a police misdemeanor or something like that. It's our own municipal code, and it's for anything from code enforcement cases that they don't follow up on to any of the other infractions in our code.
Okay, thank you.
Majority is code enforcement that deals with that.
I see. Thank you. I see, thank you. And, in the budget summaries by, under the tab expenditures, page 24, it's the one with the two pie charts, expenditure summary by fund and category. Why are some of the departments in both pie charts? I'm just trying to understand how we split the different categories, yeah?
So, the top pie chart is just for the general fund.
Okay.
So, this would be
Oh, I see.
Kind of comprehensive of what we looked at during the presentation. And, then, the other fund expenditure category would be our special revenue funds and our internal service funds. So, that's where we get the large portion for retirement, that is for the retirement fund in the other, other fund expenditure category.
Right. So, so, some, some of the departments, like, get, are included in both?
Depending on the expenditure type, yeah. So, it could be included in both, but these are your, right, so, these are your grants, the, at the bottom, the other fund expenditure category, these are your grants. So, if the grant relates to community development, then community development would be in the other funds expenditure category.
Okay. And, looking at the top pie chart, the one that's general fund expenditure by department, when they, one near the top, the gray one, which is community services, says, let's see, community services and public works, the gray, the gray sliver?
Oh, I see. No, apologies for that. So, certainly, the pie chart is a little kind of off, when it's all squeezed together.
Okay.
So, certainly, no, there, of course, both departments are separated.
So, public works is the gray, it's the bigger piece. And, I'm assuming community services, the orange, to the left?
Correct.
Okay, and then city councils?
I'll make sure that that gets split out, in order to see it more clearly.
Yeah, and my eyesight's not that good, so, I'm squinting, going, huh, what part is what?
Yeah, so, definitely, for the two pie charts, as Will has said, the top one is for general fund only, the bottom is for the remainder of the other funds that use, that we have talked about on our special revenues. So, they're completely split up, but together, the two pie chart will make up our entire expenditure budget for fiscal year '24, '25.
Okay. Wait, public works, oh, this one, public works is this one?
So, we add all of those pie chart together, the expenditure for the year is $82,247.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving from, from the booklet to the, your presentation from today, page, in the PowerPoint presentation, page 21. 17, 21. Well, actually, I'll ask that later. I'll go to page 31 first. Page 31, fiscal '20, '24, '25 budgets study session, citywide staffing. What is, let's see. Oh, the, the, in the box, it says reclassified six positions, and at the bottom, what is an equity adjustment as an IT manager? What does that mean?
Yeah, for, so, the equity adjustment for that position is an adjustment for that position salary range to become equitable with other positions that are similar to that position in other agencies, as well as within, as well as within similar manager positions within the city.
Oh.
So, it's an adjustment to that position salary range.
Okay, you see, and ranks, I guess. Okay, thank you. Then, going back to page 21, the five-year projection, it looks, it looks very good, but can you kind of explain a little bit how you, kind of the methodology and, and the assumption that we're, right now, we're at the 32 percent, and that we're going to be close to 40 percent?
Yes, absolutely, Councilmember Chan. So, we began with '24, '25, and that is the proposed budget, so we'll call that the base year. And, then, we added assumptions for revenues, revenue increases, and those revenue increase assumptions range from 0% to 4% for property tax. We also added assumptions for expenditure increases, COLA increases, and those expenditure increases range from 3% to 7.5%. There is no vacancy savings built in. It includes $350,000 transfer to the Mission Playhouse, and then, we put in $500,000 for the one-time projects. And, then, we assumed that the new hotel will come onboard on July 1st, 2025, added $250,000 that first year, which is, seems very conservative, even though we do understand that they will be getting 50% of the TOT, and then, another $250,000 for, in the second year. So, a total of $500,000, and then, that would increase with the, with the percentage increases moving forward.
And, I would add, Councilman Chan, if you look in the budget document on page 37 to 40, for those of you like yourself, who are accountants and want to see the gory details of that, it's, every single assumption we're using, every increase we're using over the five years, so you can see the detailed numbers that make up that simple chart that...
Oh, I see, got it, thank you. Okay, thank you, then. That is all I have at the moment, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chan. Who's next? Councilmember Ding?
Thank you, Mayor. So, a question also, SI4, I saw the state sales tax, they have the three category. The first, first one, it's state sales tax, and then, I don't understand that those, called a sales tax, the PSAF, and then, nothing changed, what's that meaning? And, then, it's a major SG, I know, yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Ding. So, we have the state sales tax, that's, that's the normal sales tax, the 1% that we get for, for all the sales in San Gabriel. And, then, we have our measure SG, that's the 0.75% for all of the sales where the item is used in San Gabriel. And, then, we have a sales tax, PSAF stands for Public Safety Augmentation Fund, and that's a, a sales tax that is remitted from the state, that is for public safety, public, public safety expenditures, to help pay for our public safety.
Oh, that's a special sales tax they assign to every city. Maybe it's a different, based on the population, or based on?
Yeah, I believe it's the population. I know every city gets a minimum of 100,000, and we would need to provide a budget document, at least in the past, that we have budgeted funds to, to use those amounts. I believe the tax is 0.1%, and it goes to the state, and the state remits a portion of that to the, to the local public safety agencies, and then, the rest is used by the state for public safety purposes.
Okay. And, you say state tax, we can, like, nine point something, and then, we got it 1%?
That's correct.
And, the major SG, maybe it's still the same question, but I want to double check. For the major SG, it's 0.75. But, interesting, why the major SG is higher than the state tax?
Yeah, that's a good observation, and I know when measure SG was first coming in, we were really surprised at, at the amount, as compared to our normal sales tax. And, so, we've had a few years receiving the measure SG, and we're seeing some consistency where it's 105% of the normal state sales tax. And, so, the reasoning for that is because, at least from our, at least from our perspective, that San Gabriel doesn't have any of the big-box store, or, or doesn't have any auto retailers, doesn't have any of the large-type purchases. So, those purchases are done in other locations, and then, they're brought into San Gabriel, and San Gabriel's getting the tax. I think vehicles is probably the biggest one. We don't have any major car dealerships, so all the vehicles that are purchased outside of San Gabriel, when it's registered to San Gabriel, were receiving the 0.75% sales tax.
But, if, if, for example, they go, Hambra, Acadia, they, they have, so, if the, our San Gabriel resident, if we purchase the, the car over there, we, we didn't get the 1%, we just only got the 0.75?
Exactly, Councilmember.
Okay.
Yep. But, conversely, Alhambra gets the 1%, but not the 0.75. So, it doesn't get twice.
Yeah. But, but interesting, why they, I know that the, the car dealer, they always say, if you purchase over there, but you're, the register, the address in the San Gabriel, they should be charging the San Gabriel percentage. From my understanding, it should be this 1% go to our city, too.
You hit the nail on the head, Councilman Ding. It's when you register it, when they ask you the address where you're going to register it, they charge sales tax based on that local sales tax, but the 1% goes to the local where you purchased it, and the 0.75 goes to the city. It's actually called a use tax, so it's wherever that product is put into use.
So, okay, so, actually, if a city have the, with the car dealer, they always have an advantage for to keep their 1%?
Correct. They always keep the 1%,
Okay.
They don't get the, the 0.75%, but they have, those, those car dealers bring in a lot of revenue
Okay.
With that 1%.
Maybe that's why, the less, okay. All right, thank you, the, we are in a market to clarify. And, then, SR5, it's maybe the small amount, but interesting for the, we're expanding, like, plumbing permit and electrical permit, expanding some, it's more presented to increase. I, I just want to know why we're expanding the more plumbing and electrical permit, the percentage. The building permit, it's reduced, it's a lot, but that one, it's increased, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good, good question, Councilmember. We, because we're going to be seeing a decrease in the larger projects. So, the larger projects are generally will bring in the, the bigger revenue, when it comes to building permits. In fact, when we look at across the board, our base revenue for building permits, not taking into account the larger projects, normally, we're hovering around $600,000 in revenue. Those are your residential improvements, your tenant improvements for commercial, and then, you add on the larger projects, that's why you, you have the 1.4 million, or the 1.2 million dollars that you see on the chart there. With respect to the plumbing and electrical permits, and why we're seeing an increase there is because of those smaller residential projects, those smaller commercial tenant improvements, that you're going to see a lot more of. These are just standard renovations that include having to do a wholesale repiping of the entire unit, or wholesale electrical systems being done to, to the home, or all, to, also to the commercial unit as well. So, we're going to be seeing a lot more of that, because the cost of construction, as we all know, is going up, so the projects tend to downsize. And, so, when you see the downsized, you, you get more, more of the smaller projects, hence, is why we're seeing the revenues for those two items going up, and the larger projects going down.
Okay, so, so, that, maybe I assume, maybe, because I have almost nineteen projects done, and after then, the inside tenant improvement, and, or like, a resident happens and do something else, so, probably, it's a lot, additional plumbing and electrical.
Right.
Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. You're also seeing some of these projects that have gone through the approval process, have gone through the plan check process for building plan check, are not obtaining the permits, because they're just stalling out. We have a variety of projects of the nineteen that have been mentioned for many years, a few of them have stalled out, in terms of not having the shovel break ground. And, so, you're seeing that impact our, our building permit revenues. As we anticipated those to come in, they're not, in fact, coming in, and you're, so, you're seeing the reduction in the revenues for building permits.
Okay, thank you. And, it's, I still, like, for the, for the, like, fine SR6, so, the parking fine, the question, it's, it's, you increase it because of too many people that are parking that have fine, or we have the, the, like, the fine, the fee, which will be, annually will be increased or not?
I can answer that one, Councilmember.
Yeah.
So, we had the adopted amount in '23, '24 of 700,000, and the proposed amount for '24, '25 is 800,000. As we looked at our history, our historical trends of what amounts were coming in for parking fines, so, in '22, '23, we received 863,000
863,000.
Parking fines. And, then, for '23, '24, we're projecting about 800,000, conservatively.
Okay.
So, 863, and '22, '23, '22, '23, 800, and '23, '24. So, conservatively, we're saying, well, we'll probably stay around that level.
How about the previous year, so, how much?
In '21, '22, we were at 727,000.
700, the question is, because the way, the, the fine is, the fee is increased, or just the, the more, so, this fine, every year, we, we automatically increase? I just, why, because we discussed before, for the business license. Business license, we're back to the 1991, we don't, we did nothing increase. For the discitation, it's we, our policy, it's every year have some, based on some number to increase?
Yes, Councilmember Ding, over the last two years, we were able to increase the fine amounts based, based on our fee schedule. So, we've, as we've, as we've applied CPI to increases to our fee schedule,
Okay.
That has increased parking fine amounts
Okay.
Over the last two years.
Okay, but, then, another question is, it's, how many incidents, the parking citation? Is it increased, or it's stable?
Maybe our police chief will have that information.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I don't have exact numbers for you this evening, but we do believe that it is on a decline.
It's a decline?
Yes.
Okay, the total is declining, but because the, what's I think, the penalty is increased, okay. All right, that's good news, too. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Penalty per instance is, is higher, but there's fewer events, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I think the Vice Mayor already asking the Rebecca, Rebecca... Yeah, and I think the Vice Mayor already asking Rebecca regarding the nonprofit organization for the Mission Playhouse. So, we only have the three years right now, okay? For our 100-year for the Mission Playhouse, okay? So, I really wish to, how can we push that? Okay, even three years, maybe it's not enough to help us establish this kind of nonprofit organization. Hopefully, if we have the nonprofit organization, it's hopefully we can, for the future, we can have the green rider maybe can help us. If we, we are luckily, we got some, some like grant from the state federal, even like private company. So, hopefully, I think in the long run, it's how can we like establish some fund, especially for the Mission Playhouse, the annually, the expense and the maintenance? Yeah, we should be find out some way to weigh and, yeah, that's the Mission Playhouse. Hopefully, we can, if Rebecca can do the more study to help, okay? Actually, I remember the back to the 2018, in the community service, the commissioner, we discussed that too, yeah. Another capital improvement, okay. So, my question, just wanted to understand it. We plan to like do the public safety building for the police and the fire? So, we, is, I just want to clear, for the reserve fund, will have anything like dedicated for this project too? Or just for, reserve for everything?
We'll go into further detail, but we have both. We have the 25% minimum that council has set and that is approximately $17 million. We, or 16 million, whatever that is, it's on the slide that Will showed. If you look at slide number 24.
24, okay.
And actually, slide 25 goes into, I'm sorry, slide 24.
24.
So, if we're looking at 24, 25 budget, which is on the far left side, the 25% minimum is the gray bar and so that's about 13.4 million.
Okay.
The blue and the orange are the two committed.
Committed.
Being OPEB funding. So, it means we have about 1.5 million dollars set aside just for our OPEB, which is the retiree health, for those of you in the audience or public who don't know OPEB. And then, the 2.5 million, 2.55 million, that's capital replacement. So, that could be used for anything from the police and fire building to streets, to IT purchases, to anything at all, roofing, the pool. So, we don't have a specific fund committed for the public safety building, but we do have a capital replacement fund.
Okay.
Those are just placeholders in our reserves. Those are assigned, but it doesn't mean we couldn't use them for any other general fund purpose. They're not set aside in a different fund, they're not invested differently. So, they're all commingled together to make up the 29 or 30% reserve that you see in the other charts. When you look at how that's counted out, we consider 2.5 billion of that set aside for that.
Okay, but not just for the safety building, but also include like some, even like sometimes the emergency fund for the paving the street, okay? So, yeah, because the, if we try, I think, if we can consider like designated reserve fund for this public safety building, maybe help the community to understand that we really, really care current our police, police department, the fire department. Yeah, I feel that really we need to give to them the good environment to have the, also it's a help our, especially for we have the, we need a ladder. We need like fire department to have the better equipment to fitting this kind of building. So, yeah, that's my suggestion because we try to use the bond or whatever, maybe take time. If we can, just little by little to save the fund for the future, probably, at least we start something, so, okay. So, I wish a couple of years, but I don't think so right now, right? But we, at least to start something, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's my comments and, yeah, thanks to the mayor.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Ding, and Councilmember Harrington, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Will for the presentation. It was, the presentation as well as the budget itself, I think over the years, the budget has gotten much easier to read. Not as much cross-indexing, everything's presented in one place, which I really do appreciate. As far as specific questions, I don't really have any. It was, I did a lot of reading and I think I understand where we're headed and I really like some of the decisions that we've made. As far as, that chart right there is a great one that shows we're trying to pay down some of our future debt so that it, the more we pay here, the earlier we pay it, the less we're gonna have in the future. I'd like to be able to pay more. I know our UAL is pretty, it's increasing faster than we could ever pay it. At one point, that's gonna have to be probably a third chart on here, a third bar on here, besides the orange and the blue. But I really do appreciate the fact that those are increasing enough to keep it, I would say, at bay. It's still increasing, but we're keeping it so that it's not unmanageable. So, I really appreciate that. Other than that, I think it was well presented, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers, and just, you know, obviously, the credit goes to the finance team for the budget.
Yeah, I didn't think you did it all yourself.
Yeah, no, just want to clarify that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. Well, thank you again for, you know, doing such a detail, very easy to understand budget, study and presentation. I just have a couple of questions about, I believe, Councilmember Harrington has asked, but I just want to make sure that for the five-year forecast on slide 22. So, you said this year, which is 2024 to 2025, is the base year. So, can you, can we be more specify that what action this year we will have taken to contribute and make the boosting, the net change in funds from 773,000 to 2 million? Because this is a big job. And it seems like the year of 2025 to 2026, that will be the most that we have. Are we anticipating the TOD tax from the business that has not opened at this moment, but we believe they will be open next year?
Thank you, Mayor. For 25, 26, the two biggest changes from the 24, 25 year is, one, in 25, 26, we will exchange Prop A funds for $750,000 in general fund money. So, that'll be an increase in our general fund dollars. And the forecast model includes $500,000 for one-time type expenditures. In the 24, 25 budget year, we have over a million. So, there is a million, $500,000 more in 24, 25 and only 500,000 in 25, 26. So, that, that right there makes up for about 1.2 million in the increase that we see in the net change in fund balance.
I just want to emphasize that whoever will be in that year as a mayor, that is really a good thing. Well, thank you, and page 13, on the bottom of the page, regarding property tax revenue, the use of money in property. So, the rental income, is it correct that we are, is that some property that we own actually, like Luna Restaurant and some of the property that we own and we are actually paying out of our pockets to maintain the property?
So, we do have a couple of rental properties. So, the Luna is one and at the corner of Santa Anita and McQuarrie, there's also another one, American Fuji. So, those are the two rental properties that we have. Included in the same line item for the revenue is our cell tower. So, we do have a couple of cell tower, one Mission Playhouse and the other at the Dalmar Norwood Corner. So, those are the ones that goes in there. As far as maintenance goes, we do have budgeted some funds in order to maintain and that lies in the Community Development Department, between the Building and Safety Department as well as the Economic Development, who really kind of take care and watch over the agreements for our rental properties.
So, we do have a budget and for scheduled maintenance for those properties?
Correct, we do have, we do set a small budget aside in cases needed. So, this year, we have used the fund, so in prior years, some years, we don't use any.
And for Fuji, that is now month to month?
Correct.
And for Luna, that we will, we actually have still like two years or two and a half?
We still have another two, three years for that agreement, that is correct.
I see, okay, thank you, Linda. And so, regarding the first line, that property tax revenue, that, I'm sorry, I just confused, but compared with the project, I mean, the presentation, page 11, it shows it's a 4.5% increase, but in our book, it shows 5%. So, I assume that those are not, we do not count those projects, it's not being completed. Either it's residential or mixed use. And those property, they have not obtained the certificate of occupancy. Those will not be counted in as our tax, property tax revenue, is that correct?
I think that the difference between the four and a half percent and the 5% is actually due to rounding.
What is that?
It's due to rounding.
Okay.
So, the budget book is only to zero places and we went to the one place on the...
I thought that would be higher because we have a lot of ADUs and we have a lot of transactions on the real estate transaction in our city. So, the increase would be like, you said 4.5 to 5%. So, that's the major reason we are getting a little bit more.
Exactly, so, as you know, Mayor, the increase in assessed values is limited to 2% based on Prop 13. And so, all of the current properties in our city will be increased by 2%. But the new development will add on top of that 2% and also any exchanges. So, instead of just being at the flat 2%, we're at four and a half percent.
Do we have any vacancy tax for commercial building?
Vacancy tax?
That means they keep the property vacant there for a long, long time? They're not doing business, they're not owner use, but they just leave it there for mosquito or for, just stay there and just idle the property, it's not generating anything? Do we have those kind of vacancy tax that if they don't lease it out for certain amount of time, then we will start taxing them? Do you have those?
No, no.
We do not, Mayor. It's something that cities are looking at. Something if council wanted us to look at, we could bring back some information on that. I know there are a couple of cities who have done it recently. I do want to clarify one of the questions that you had regarding if there's a project and we're waiting for their certificate of occupancy, if they didn't have their property taxes assessed. The assessor actually analyzes properties throughout construction. So, even though the Hilton or the Curio is not completed and doesn't have their certificate of occupancy, the assessor will go out there and do interim inspections and will assess it based on the improvements that are out there. So, they might be getting, I'm making this up, but they might be getting charged 75% of what their final property tax bill will be because the assessor might look at that and think it's 75% done. So, those numbers are included in the budget. So, for Province or the One or any of those other projects that are coming out of the ground, but that is actual property tax revenue we're receiving, not projections. That's actual money that we get every April and December from the assessor. The 5% increase is a number we use from a consultant, HDL companies. They analyze our future property taxes, but it's also based on information that the assessor puts out. So, long story short, we are getting interim assessments for those projects that have started construction. It doesn't have to wait until the very end.
So, whatever we, assesses of is a collect from, collects from the property owners, we get our share.
That's correct.
And the number that today, that showing here today, that is the number that we actually receive.
The number for actuals is the number we receive. The proposed or the budgeted number is based on that increase that our consultant looks at for next year and it's the 2% from the Prop 13 amount plus the sales when it gets reassessed plus construction. And I'll tell you that we are probably in the top 30% of cities in the county for that increase. When we get our report from the sales, or the property tax consultant, most cities are looking at two or 3% increases this year because the housing market has been so low. But San Gabriel, you know, so many folks are selling their homes that used to be assessed at lower values and are now being reassessed and also the projects. So, 5% or four and a half percent, depending on what chart you're looking at, is a healthy growth rate for our city.
Awesome, thank you very much. And, yeah, so the question I have for Mark, so regarding the reclassification, that we are adding three assistant positions. That means like assistant directors or deputy directors. And should we, so are those positions remain unfilled? That means keep that vacant until a director or department has the case they're roles?
No, I should have done a better job of explaining that. We have, each of the, or most of the departments has divisions, the larger departments have divisions. So, I'm just gonna use Community Development as an example. They have a Building and Safety Division that has a Building and Safety Manager, who happens to be Chris Kalbalkian, just so you can put a face to the title. They have Economic Development, which is Caroline, and then they have Planning, which is Samantha. So, for example, in that department, one of those three positions would be reclassified to have a special pay for Assistant Director. So, Aldo would do a mini internal recruitment and one of those three people, whoever is the most qualified or who wants it, some people might not want to have the extra duties of an Assistant Director, they would be put into that Assistant Director position. So, you'd have Aldo as Director and then you'd have, one of the, mini Aldo is a great way to describe that as the second person. And the reason why I'm careful to say it's just that specialty pay or the classification is because let's say it was the Economic Development Manager and then that person moves on. Maybe there's somebody else of those three that would be better suited because you'd be bringing somebody new on board in that Economic Development position. So, the short answer is no, we don't have to wait until the directors move on in order to add that Assistant Director position. But that person, whoever that assistant is, could be there and ready to go if the Director leaves. And that's the same would be, right now, we have one in Finance, an Assistant Director, and this would be adding one in Community Development, Community Services and Public Works.
Public Works, okay, great. And how many NIS staff we have right now? We have three, right?
Aldo, can you back me up on that? I do believe we have, we have three. We have the manager, excuse me, Senior Code Officer and two Code Officers.
That's correct, yes.
So, we have three. And so, is there any need to increase the staffs for the NIS?
We recently hired the third Code Enforcement Manager after at least a two-year search. As we have been talking about this evening, the difficulties with recruitment, that was a very difficult position to recruit. We actually offered that position to many folks who turned us down for other positions. And so, we finally were able to hire that third officer. So, as Mark had mentioned, we have a Senior Officer and two Code Enforcement Officers. With the budget that we're presenting tonight, we're looking to add a part-time Code Enforcement Officer. And so, that part-time Code Enforcement Officer could be used for evening operations or during the weekends or can have a weekend shift type of deal. But what that allows us to do in total with that division is each officer could be assigned a... a segment within the city. And so, it can be a commercial Code Enforcement Officer, one that can deal with business license matters, another one that can deal with sort of a residential, north side versus south side. So, given, given what we have now, and given what we're requesting, we'd like to sort of look at that and see how that plays out for the last year or the next year, I would say. And the hope is that we can sort of segment out the city to have very specific areas for these officers to target, and the result could be that we have a very efficient process.
So, so far, the staff from NIS, are they enforcing the code proactively, or they are, like, very passive, just wait until people make a phone call to complain, then they will just go out to...
It's both. I would say it's both, but for the most part, we are reactionary, given the resources are slim, three officers with many different type of issues that we face in this city, from residential to commercial to industrial issues, also dealing with tree issues as well. And so, given that we're spread pretty thin as far as resources, we have no choice but to react based off concerns, emails, phone calls received by the public. But, as we are out doing follow-ups or looking into a call for concern, as we drive around, we look for other issues. And so, we do have a small percentage that is proactive, but for the most part, we are reactionary.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you very much, Aldo.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a small, easy question?
Please.
Aldo, just for the benefit of anyone who might be watching online, can you please remind us what NIS is?
So, we actually, the last budget, we changed, changed it from NIS to Code Enforcement. So, NIS stand for Neighborhood Improvement Services.
That sounds so much nicer than Code Enforcement. That sounds so much prettier.
It does, it does, but, and it does, it gives a nice pleasant sort of feel to the, to that division, but it's not what we do. We do Code Enforcement. When you, when you look at, you know, when you ask several recruitments, or individuals who are interested in coming into the city, you know, what is NIS, you know, Neighborhood Improvement Services? Well, that's not what we actually do. We do Code Enforcement. We issue citations, we respond to concerns of illegal dumping, or a boarding situation or hoarding situation. And so, given that we're reactionary, we are more of a Code Enforcement Division.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, Clark, do we have any public comment?
We have not received any.
Okay, so, it's now the time for council discussion. Who would like, who would like to start? We don't need to vote.
So, we're not looking for any, any vote or anything tonight. Will laid out the next steps. We'll be having individual meetings with council members over the next few weeks, and have our community meeting. And if council requests any further follow-up, we can provide that during the budget adoption, which we're aiming for June the 4th. So, we'll take any and all suggestions or recommendations or requests between now and then, and then we'll be coming back on June the 4th with that revised budget and prepared to adopt.
Great. Thank you. So, this is the only item we have tonight. So, if there's no other questions, then the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.